The way we have settled the coast basically assumes that the sea is not supposed to change and that we're not supposed to move with the ocean as it moves inland.
Lessons from coastal California for everyone living on the edge of rising oceans. That's on the next On Point.
Weekday evenings at seven on Radio IQ. Radio IQ gets support from Davenport Energy, a family owned company providing propane, fuel oil, gasoline, and diesel fuel throughout southwest and south side Virginia since 1941.
Tracy Tully tells the story behind one of the most explosive political corruption cases in recent history, the case of Robert Menendez, his wife Nadine, and the Egyptian American businessman at the center of the alleged scheme. So Tracy, really explosive charges in this indictment. What is the initial reaction to them?
It was swift.
We just got a statement from the governor, and let me read it to you because it's very serious.
So by five o'clock Friday night, the governor of New Jersey, Phil Murphy, who's a Democrat, issues an email.
The allegations in the indictment against Senator Menendez and four other defendants are deeply disturbing.
And calls for Menendez's immediate resignation.
The alleged facts are so serious that they compromise the ability of Senator Menendez to effectively represent the people of our state.
Within seconds, a tsunami of emails flow in from pretty much all other major Democratic leaders in the state in lockstep calling for Senator Menendez's resignation, which was very different than what we saw in 2017 when political leaders throughout the state stood with Senator Menendez.
And Tracy, why would they not have done that in the past prosecution of Menendez, but they're doing it now? Why are they calling for his stepping down now?
I think there's two reasons for that. One is the indictment appears on its face to be far more serious this time around. It involves a foreign government, federal aid, weapons, and potentially meddling into criminal investigations. But additionally, when Senator Menendez faced trial in 2017, New Jersey had a Republican governor, Governor Chris Christie, which meant that if Menendez had stepped down, then the governor would have chosen a Republican replacement, more than likely. But now, if Senator Menendez were to step down, a Democratic governor, Governor Murphy, would choose his replacement. And so it's a little bit of a different calculus.
Okay, so that's Democrats in the state of New Jersey. What about national level Democrats?
They've had a far more muted response. We heard initially from Senator Chuck Schumer of New York basically saying, he deserves his day in court. Let's not rush to judgment. A few other folks in the Senate have, in fact, called for his resignation, John Fetterman of Pennsylvania, Azad Sherrod Brown of Ohio. But in general, the White House was sending signals that they're not going to put their fingers on the scale, that it's really up to Senator Menendez and the Democratic leaders in the Senate to decide whether he steps down or not. And I think it's slightly different because they're concerned more about the balance of power in the Senate, which is already a razor thin majority for Dems, and not upsetting that balance of power if they don't need to. And what was considered a very safe seat for a very long time, the thought of having to defend that seat and to spend money defending it is not appealing.
So what does Menendez himself actually say about what happened and the charges?
We heard a lot at a news conference held in his home turf in Hudson County Union City.
Good morning. Thank you to all of you who are here today, especially the New Jerseians who have joined me as I address the events of the last few days.
And he basically asked, and he used the word humbly, I humbly ask.
All I humbly ask for in this moment is to pause and allow for all the facts to be presented.
That you give me a chance and let the case play out as it should.
I firmly believe that when all the facts are presented, not only will I be exonerated, but I still will be the New Jersey's senior senator.
He's confident that he will be exonerated.
Remember, prosecutors get it wrong sometimes.
And the facts have been presented in a way that are salacious by the federal prosecutors and that it's really not that bad, guys. And then he tried to explain the cash.
For 30 years, I have withdrawn thousands of dollars in cash from my personal savings account.
He said that it had become his habit to withdraw large sums of money to keep in his home.
Which I have kept for emergencies and because of the history of my family facing confiscation in Cuba.
He sort of suggested, without fully explaining, that this was a habit that stemmed from his parents' experience in Cuba. They were both refugees from Cuba.
So Tracy, stepping back a little here, this is a man who already spent a number of years of his career fighting corruption charges, even going to trial over them. So it kind of mystifies me that he is accused of doing it again. How do you explain that?
People were frankly gobsmacked by the timing and especially as laid out in the indictment. The allegations are that within a month of being cleared by the Justice Department in early 2018, he essentially, according to prosecutors, begins this corrupt scheme to accept bribes for the benefit of the Egyptian government. It just, people were just scratching their heads and saying, how is this even possible? According to the indictment, it was Nadine and Hannah that were the ones planning the meetings, were the ones that were the go betweens with the Egyptian officials. And I think there is a lot yet to be learned about how knowing Senator Menendez was, at least in the beginning, about the true motive of the Egyptian officials.
Tracy, thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Tully covers New Jersey for The New York Times. Today, several senators called for Menendez to step down, including New Jersey's junior Senator Cory Booker. And on Wednesday, Menendez and his wife Nadine are scheduled to be arraigned at a federal courthouse in Manhattan. They are expected to plead not guilty.
The Daily is supported by C3 AI. C3 Generative AI provides a ChatGPT enterprise search that is verifiable, secure, and accurate across all enterprise data. Learn more at c3.ai. This is Enterprise AI. Innovative, immersive, and skillfully investigated, The Daily brings listeners today's stories as only The New York Times can report them. For more on today's episode, go to nytimes.com/thedaily.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily by going to nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Sabrina Tavernise. See you tomorrow.
The weather can be pretty complex, which is why a good analogy goes a long way.
The watch phase is you've got the meat, you've got the cheese, but they're all in their own individual containers still. When we get to the warning phase, we've actually built the taco.
Commonwealth's The Weather and Climate Newsletter from Radio IQ breaks down the different.
For September 26, 2023, the board held its open session at 3:00 PM today, followed by work session and closed session. Item N, certification resolution, in the closed session just concluded. Nothing was discussed except the matter which was identified in the motion to convene in closed session. Only those matters lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item O is public hearing and second reading of ordinances. O1 is the petition of Latonya Lambert to obtain a special use permit to operate a short term rental on approximately 0.2857 acre of land zone, R1 low density residential district located at 5064 Sunnyside Drive, Cave Spring Magisterial District. Mr. Philip Thompson, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is another application, especially use permit for short term rental. Site is kind of located off of Merriman Road, off of Sunnyside Drive in the Cave Spring District, kind of a closer side, closer view. About almost a third of an acre. There is existing single family home also on the property and they are requesting a special use permit for a short term rental. Couple photographs of the house. This is the outside with the driveway. Couple views of the backyard of the property. Two bedrooms are part of this short term rental. Those are the two bedrooms, a couple living areas associated with that as part of the short term that are in the house. Kitchen and dining room, and then two bathrooms that would be used for the short term rental as well. So, you know, a short term rental is defined as the provision of room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for a charge for the occupancy. Obviously, we have other short term rentals that we define, and those aren't covered in this definition. There are standards. Standards really deal with getting a zoning permit, providing us information about the property, about the applicant, and also who could resolve any disputes if those came up. And then, you know, if it changes hands, the property sells, that the new owner, you know, a special use permit is good for two years, it would continue. If that owner still wanted to do that, they needed then come in and get a new permit with all that information. Again, and also, it could be withdrawn or revoked by the zoning administrator if they're in violation of any county codes. And the reason for this is in R1, R2, if it's less than five acres, requires a special use permit. So surrounded by R1 on all sides. It's a subdivision. Neighborhood conservation is the future land use designation. So again, that's what most of them are and is consistent with that use. The Planning Commission held a public hearing beginning of August. There were two citizens who spoke, who were a neighbor, and there was also three written comments, I think they're in your packet. Their concerns were safety and security, noise disturbance, traffic impacts, pedestrian safety, the temporary nature of short term rentals, debris in the yard or the neighbor's yard, impact on property taxes and property maintenance of the facility, and then also that use not being consistent with R1 zoning. They, the Plank Commission discussed all these issues raised by the citizens as well as, you know, the rental being limited to only four overnight guests. They do have security cameras that are used on the property so they can monitor who's coming and going and so forth. And they do have rules for these, that exist for renting the house, and there are several nearby residents that have their contact number, but the ones that spoke didn't have their number, but I think she was going to give that to them after the Plank Commission meeting. Plank Commission recommends approval of the special use permit with the one condition that the number of overnight guests shall not exceed four people. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson? Thank you. Is the petitioner here or representative of the petitioner?
I don't think so. We actually, I was trying to, we didn't get notification. We actually postponed it because she couldn't make the August meeting for this meeting, but I don't believe she is here. She is a traveling nurse, and so I think she had been down in Atlanta, and that's why the request for the extension of this meeting, but I do not see her here.
Okay. So we'll move on to the public hearing. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak on this petition?
No ma'am.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing and then promptly close the public hearing. Are there any further questions or concerns from the board?
Madam Chairman, I have some comments. I, as the board knows, I struggle with short term rentals in heavily residential neighborhoods. And this is a fairly heavily residential neighborhood in Cave Spring District. I know that as a policy, we've created several general standards in order to allow this, and I think the idea is to try to benefit the property owner, help the property owner out. And we have in our ordinance a series of general standards that attempt to protect the neighbors. I believe that the condition that is recommended by the Planning Commission to limit the number of guests to four removes some of the concerns that I have in terms of what kind of detriment this is to the neighbors and to the community. Generally, I would reluctantly support approval of the special use permit. I'd like to hear from the other board members with their concerns. Where I struggled was, I guess it was last year, we had the special use permit for this short term rental down on White Pelican. And I know staff, zoning administrator, county attorney's office has taken appropriate enforcement actions against the property owner. And that's still, those are still ongoing. But although we, the county does move slow, we do move, and we have taken the property owner to court, and we've gotten various judgments against him. So the question I think the other board members would throw at me is, how can I consistently support this application while opposing the previous application? I look back at White Pelican, and to me, it was tucked so far deep into the residential neighborhood, I really saw some difficulty about how that kind of use could play out in terms of the comments from other board members, because I think each of us have rented either through Airbnb or VRBO as we've traveled, and we've really used those opportunities to explore and be tourists in other jurisdictions. Where White Pelican was located, it was miles from any kind of commercial use. This location, and I will say it's, this location is maybe four blocks from where I live. This location is much closer to Cave Spring Elementary, Cave Spring Middle School, to Brambleton, Route 220, where the White Pelican was not in close proximity to any kind of commercial uses or other, not saying a school is a commercial use, but it's a different kind of high intensity use. So I, I struggle with saying that this would be a substantial detriment to the community. I think the general standards and the proposed condition attempts to address those. But I think I still have a struggle with short term rentals in residential neighborhoods that are deep into a residential subdivision and not in close proximity to major primary highways, commercial locations, touristy kind of locations, elements like that. So I'm sort of reluctantly leaning towards a motion to approve, but I'd like to hear how the other board members feel, because I think we, we do have a broader issue with respect to short term rentals. And I think all of us have seen how other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth are attempting to place more stringent, more stringent requirements and limitations on short term rentals. Mr. Radford?
Yeah. Paul, so what I can recall from White Pelican, and I think I remember voting against that also, but we were getting complaints and the people were operating before they got the permit. They had over 10, they were allowing like 10 people in. There were like four or five cars. I mean, to me, the, the capacity was the problem. When I look at this, this petition and the house and the area around it and the limit of four, I don't get that feeling. I feel a lot more safe about approving this than what occurred. So I think you're comparing a different scenario with, with White Pelican and the one that's before us.
I'll jump in and add a comment to, to your point of being a tourist or visiting a new community and that having a, a, a short term rental in the deep areas of a neighborhood may not serve the same purpose for a tourist. But there are a lot of other uses where, you know, I think a travel nurse situation was mentioned, where people may come into the community for periods of time to take on certain types of jobs. And I think it serves those kinds of uses well. And we have such a lack of available housing for these types of situations. I think there's a need, I think that there's a need for this type of use, and I'm glad that it's a special use permit. I like looking at them individually if it's less than five acres, which I believe is the standard. And so I'd like to hear from others too, if there's anyone else who wants to make a comment on it, and then we'll hand it back to you.
Yeah, I kind of echo your comments about, seems like this is a reasonable request. I'm not wild about them neither, being in a lot of residential neighborhoods, especially not close to, you know, activities, tourist events, that kind of thing. It's not going to attract outside people every weekend coming in for different venues and activities going on in the area. But I will tell you this, with 1,100 new jobs coming to Rono County, it's going to put a lot of pressure on people that want to do this. They probably might want to consider selling, and the demand for housing is going to be strong. I think this is probably a reasonable request, as long as they, you know, comply with the restriction.
I think Mr. Radford's point is to distinguish this from White Pelican. White Pelican looked more like a party house. I think with the restriction here, this is not a party house.
No.
Where it's a very different, different situation.
You've got to take each one of them on its own merits, I guess.
And I guess I'll add that we have this in place for a reason. The reason, because it was happening without our knowledge, with no limitations, and, you know, we've put this in place for a reason, and we have limitations and enforcements that are in place to handle if there is a problem. And as we heard, that those, this can be removed if it's, if it's mismanaged. So I do hear the concern about, you know, being in the neighborhood, but I think we've put those parameters out there to prevent it from getting out of hand. And, you know, so I don't have a problem with it.
Well, with that, Madam Chair, I would move that the board approves the petition to obtain a special use permit to operate a short term rental at 5064 Sunnyside Drive. I believe that this application meets the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Rono County Code. The special use conforms with the standards set out and the design standards set out in our zoning ordinance. That it is in conformance with our comprehensive plan. This is neighborhood conservation. And finally, it will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and on the community.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just to clarify, if I could clarify that Mr. Mahoney's motion does include the condition that the number of overnight guests shall not exceed four.
Yes, it includes the condition limiting the number of guests to four.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you very much. So item two, the petition of the Rono County School Board to rezone approximately 12.013 acres from R3 medium density multifamily residential district to C1 low intensity commercial district and to remove the proffered condition on approximately five acres of land zone C1C low intensity commercial district with conditions located at the end of Burlington Drive, 6305 Peters Creek Road, and 1120 East Drive Hollands Magisterial District. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning. Thank you.
Thanks again. I think you may have heard of this project. So the school board is looking to rezone about 12 acres and remove a proffered condition on another five acres. I think you're familiar with the site, but it's off of Peters Creek Road in the Hollands District. Again, the action is for the three. As we've talked about, there are five parcels, the other two, 6251 and the parcel below it are also part of the school site. Again, the action involves 17 acres, a little over 17 acres. The properties involved are vacant, and they are looking for the proposed use as an educational facility, primaries slash secondary, that's how we classify schools in our zoning ordinance. And so this is a schematic that they provided as part of the application. So the orange part is what's zoned R3, that's the 12.013 acres, and then we're zoning it to C1. And then the hatched pink area down at the bottom is zone C1, but also has the proffered condition that talks about access from Burlington Drive. If you have access, you have to improve the road up to a certain standard. So a couple photos, this is at the end of Burlington Drive. Again, you can see that that ends Paper Street into the property. This is kind of backing away from that. Those who might have been here with the Bojangles, remember the citizens along that road coming out about the access on the, onto Burlington Drive. So there's about four or five houses that are on the right hand side. Kind of view of the property, kind of looking at the far, the properties that are zoned more C1, kind of as they crest closer to Bojangles site. This is kind of showing, you can see Alpine off to the right, and that's where the crossover will be into the entrance, so a little beyond this entrance that you see on the property. That entrance goes back to an existing house, has been there or been on the property. Again, it's at that driveway. This is just looking at, there's a stream on the far eastern side of the property that goes through the property. And you can see it's all vacant land and vegetated. This is the end of one of the roads, Paper Streets on the east side of the property. I think it's East Drive, East Lane. Again, the property goes, and this is the other one, I think Born Street is the property there, but again, dead ends, Paper Street goes to the property that's being rezoned. So zero Burlington Drive is the five acres. Back in 1996, there was a rezoning from R3 to C1C. The petition was made by the Industrial Development Authority of Rono County at the time in Trent Development, and the proffer that was offered as part of that is if Burlington Road is used for access to the subject property, then Burlington Road shall be approved of the standards specified by the Virginia Department of Transportation, Rono County Department of Engineering. All improvements shall be completed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the first phase of any development on the site. So site was never developed, remains vacant. Part of, part of the removal is, and we'll get into the concept plan here in a second is, they are having access. Doesn't say if it's emergency access only, which they're proposing, therefore, they want to remove the proffer because it is some sort of access. Property background on 6305, it's the 6.691 acres, contains the one single family dwelling, was built around 1939. There are some accessory buildings on that site as well, and it's been vacated since around 2014. And then 1120 East Drive, which is the And then 1120 East Drive, which is the 5.322 acres, is undeveloped and vacant. Getting a little bit on the zoning, how we define educational facility, primary, secondary, as a public, private, or parochial school, offering instruction at elementary, junior, or senior high school levels in the branches of learning and study required to be taught in public schools of the Commonwealth of Virginia. So it is considered a civic use, is a by right use in C1, therefore, they're trying to rezone all the property in C1, as well as remove proffered condition. They do have standards with schools. Typically, it's if you have a ball field, if you have an activity area that abuts residential, you have to buffer that. Or if you have, if it's constructed with any type of overnight storage, school buses, again, you need to provide a buffer. The other two, B and C, deal with residential districts and agricultural district, and those don't apply. So, we did hold a community meeting on Tuesday, August 15th, at the Green Ridge Rec Center. We had representatives from county staff, VDOT, and the applicant were available at the meeting. I think we sent out 630 something letters, and we had three citizens attend, all in favor of the project. So, concept plan that's in your application, again, this is not being proffered for a variety of reasons. Obviously, the parameters of what the school will look like are still being worked out. But I do think you'll see a building with parking in front of it with a circular road around it. They do have a access road, or their access is at Alpine, which will have a traffic light as well as turn, right and left turn lanes. They do have emergency access off of Burlington Drive. You kind of see where the stormwater, stormwater will be over, closer to where the creek is located, the low part of the property. Buffer along the, once it's zoned C1, there'll be a buffer between it and anything's zoned R3. That's what they're buffering or showing the buffer on. This is a close-up of that intersection. There is a through restriction, so you can't go straight from Alpine into the, into the site, or from the site straight across to Alpine. You can make a right or a left. You can see the proposed left turn lane and the right turn lane into the site. There is a traffic study that they submitted to VDOT as part of this process, and VDOT concurred with their study. And so we also, we make them do that before they submit for the special use permit process. Surrounding zoning, to the south or to the north, it's R1 and C2. To the east is R3 and C2. To the west, C1, C2, and R3. And to the south is C1 and R3. Two, future land use designations, transition. And this encourages orderly development of highway frontage parcels, access to transition between the higher intensity and lower intensity uses. Intense retail and highway-oriented commercial use are discouraged, which are more suitable for office, institutional, which this is, and small-scale coordinated retail uses. So the use is consistent with the transition, future land use designation. Development is where, is a future land use where most new neighborhood development will occur. Community activity centers, which includes schools, is an appropriate land use and development, future land use designation. And so again, development is consistent, this proposal is consistent with the development of future land use designation. So, a project of this size, Plankards had a public hearing, we had no citizens come to speak. The applicant provided background on existing Burton Center for Arts and Technology and how the current location is inadequate for their growing needs, and how the new facility is ideally situated and would be of benefit to the area. They also mentioned the traffic improvements, which we kind of went over. Planning Commission discussed the project, the buffers, the growth potential, the benefits for economic development, traffic, surrounding zoning, future land use designations, and the need for the project. And the Plankards recommended approval of this petition. So with that, I'll take any questions you may add.
Any questions for Mr. Thompson?
I was at the community meeting, Madam Chair, and there was no opposition expressed at all. In fact, one business that's located there near Alpine, an accounting firm, visited because they were concerned about the traffic interchange at Alpine, and they were satisfied when they learned that.
They were very interested in the traffic light.
Yes, they were.
Because they have, they own that corner business, and they see this as a benefit, the light being a benefit to their business.
Right. And there's supposed to be a light.
Correct.
Installed. So I think it's going to improve the safety, if anything else, in that area, because that is a busy road.
So if there's.
Martha?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got one question for Phil.
Sure.
So that accountant, happens to be my accountant. So, there's a light there, and I can turn left to go see my accountant, because it looks like you can't go straight through, but you can turn left.
You can turn left.
Okay.
You can turn right and left.
All right. My accountant will be happy.
Well, my friend is your accountant, so maybe I should get him as my accountant.
Yeah.
So, the petitioner is here, would you all like to come up and present to the board?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. This is truly an, an exciting evening for us, not just as a school system, but I think for, you know, collectively as Rono County. You know, what began as a vision back in the 1960s, when, you know, Rono County, the school system decided, had the vision to build a career in technical education system at its, or our school at its, at its current site. You know, that was, that started something very special. Those programs have expanded over the years, they've evolved, they've changed to meet the needs of students, but also, you know, future students. So what began largely as a trade and industry program expanded to other kind of specialty centers, now houses one of the first governor's STEM academies in Virginia. The value of those core trade and industry programs have remained, in fact, grown. I think they're even more valuable even today. And as you, as you know, the, the current site has served the program as well. The programs are well-regarded in the state, but it's time for a, a new vision, for a new facility, and what could be. And so I just want to express gratitude toward the Board of Supervisors, as well as our school board for having the wisdom to jointly form that Citizens Advisory Committee. And of course, one of the key things they were charged with, with was locating a site that would be suitable for a CTE center. I think they did an excellent job. So we're really pleased to have secured the property. And with your support in getting the property rezoned, what, what could be is now what will be for not only our current students, but, and then to serve their academic and skill needs, but also as, I think, an important cornerstone for our future economic development in Rono County. So these are exciting times, and just appreciate the opportunity to bring this before you this evening.
Any questions for Dr. Nicely from our board?
Also representing, doing a lot of the legwork, tactical work, is Chris Burns here from Ballser. So if you have any technical questions, we'll pass those along to him.
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say anything, Greg?
Give Mike, the mic? A politician? Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, thank you. You know, this has been a long desire and dream for us to get out of our present site, which is actually located in Salem. And as you know, it's in a floodplain, and it, it's very costly insurance every year for just being in a floodplain. And Mr. North and Mr. Radford, that was one of the questions I asked, the first question was about a traffic signal. And that was so important, because you don't want those students trying to get out and making a, a turn, and then a U-turn back onto the road, and it just wouldn't work. So that was definitely an issue that we certainly addressed from the beginning. And, you know, it's been a process, but we certainly thank you for being involved and being with us on this, because we know that it's an economic driver. And as businesses come into town, they're looking for qualified students that come out in the trade world, or, you know, it's a whole variety of various curricula that we have now versus just the old, you know, the standard ones when I was going to school 100 years ago, you know, when you didn't have much choice of what you would do. And now they have choice, you know, there's cybersecurity, you know, there's IA now. There's all kinds of things that are coming along that we don't even know that will be there in the future. And so I know the businesses have asked us for qualified students, qualified, you know, workforce when they come out. And I know that's a very important part to, to you folks on the board. So when I was there, I heard the same thing, when I was in your seats. And so, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to work together and work forward on this, and it'll be a great project. I won't be on the board, but I'll be there for the ribbon cutting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Any further questions? So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Have we had anybody sign up to speak?
The one.
The one, yes, thank you. So first speaker I have is Valerie Brown. If you'd please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Valerie Brown, and I'm the Executive Director for the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association on Williamson Road. As the Executive Director for the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, I'm pleased to address you in support of sidewalks and crosswalks along Peters Creek Road and Williamson Road in the vicinity of the new CTE property that we've just been talking about. As such, my remarks tonight are focused on the people's side, that is specifically the pedestrians. I have served as Executive Director for the past five and a half years, and during the first three years, I spent a great amount of time getting to know the area, learning the businesses, and meeting the residents and business owners who make Williamson Road the great place that it is. It's now time to take things on Williamson Road to the next level and address the various issues that help make it better. And in this instance, it's pedestrian safety. What I have learned is the following. First and foremost, we need to improve upon the established commercial, industrial, residential, and institutional foundations, while at the same time balancing those industrial and commercial pressures with the needs of the community. That is being handled by the Economic Development Office in the county. Second, enhancement of the visual appearance of Williamson Road and Plantation Road and the surrounding areas. This is a VDI issue, and again, the development, the Economic Development Office is handling that. And thirdly, to anticipate growth pressures and create standards for quality development. And this is where I am focusing my brief remarks tonight, the need for attention yet again for pedestrian safety. These three issues do not stand in competition with each other, but rather they run concurrently. When one is down and seemingly causing issues, the other two come down and cause issues. Conversely, when one is up and working well, so do the other two. As a bit of background in addressing the issue of pedestrian safety, unfortunately, it goes without saying that the pedestrians and vehicles all along the Williamson Road corridor are seriously overrepresented with injuries and fatalities. And again, unfortunately, it's equally documented that Williamson Road in both the city and the county is the deadliest street for pedestrians. In a five-year period, there have been 12 pedestrian crashes, with five of those with visible injuries, two with severe injuries, and five fatalities. These results indicate that when a pedestrian is involved in an accident, it's more likely to result in a serious or fatal injury. One crash, one injury, one fatality is clearly one too many, and we have had more than our fair share in five years. The problem is plain and simple, there's no ease of travel for pedestrians. And it's not just the roadway issues that cause these incidents, but the lack of sidewalks as well. I share a recent accident which occurred wherein the pedestrian was using a mobility scooter and was struck while traveling along the edge of Williamson Road. The lack of sidewalks along this section of Williamson Road provided no other way except by the side of the road. The accident occurred through no unsafe driving of the vehicle, but rather because there were no sidewalks and no extra designated space for the pedestrian travel. The crash resulted in a pedestrian fatality. Unfortunately, this scenario has played out several times on Williamson Road, not always a fatality, but always an injury. Simply put, there's no easy thoroughfare for pedestrians whether along the side of the road or crossing the road. We are many who share the Williamson Road roadway. If you go a block off Williamson Road in any direction, you will find neighborhoods full of families. The area in question wants to serve its residents, its neighbors, and its business owners, as well as those who travel up and down the road to and from work, as well as those who come to shop. We want to support our schools and businesses, and we want to attract and grow more and bigger and better. To do this, we must take steps to make Williamson Road and surrounding areas as safe as we can. What we do know for sure is that we currently have is not working, so we need to take steps to make it work, make it better, make it safer. That's a big takeaway, and one that we need to pay attention to.
I need you to wrap up your comments, please.
Okay, I'm, I'm just about finished, thank you. As progress moves forward with the new center and plans get updated and changed due to dollars or timeframes, I plead with those responsible for those updates to not cut corners by removing or downsizing sidewalks and crosswalks from the plan. As we grow within the world of economic development, we need to be mindful that it's not just the building and the business that's at stake, but the additional population that makes up the greater community. And as much as we want to move forward with progress, we need to also consider those who make up our community. So in summary, and then on behalf of the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, I and my board, we lend full support to the Rono County Public Schools new CTE center, but with a caveat, we need our sidewalks and crosswalks. This is not an area where we need to cut corners. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens signed up to speak?
Any.
So we will now close the public hearing. Are there any further questions of the board?
I'll comment.
Yes, Mr. Peters.
I was going to jokingly start my comments by, is this the highest and best use of this, of this property? But I appear that was appropriate, since I've pushed for this for however many years. But as we saw earlier today, I think that, you know, when we do the right thing, we see the results of that. And, you know, I, I think many of us, it's been going on for several years, as the chair, as the chair has continued to turn over, we have continually pushed for the CTE center because we understand that the CTE is the future of Rono County. We know that when employers are looking for where they're going to place their business, they're looking for that skilled labor, as Mike referred to earlier. So I am, I'm very happy we're to this point. I know, I still hear, hear people talking about it's a lot of money, and I'll make some comments about that in my closing remarks, but, you know, I think it's money well spent. And I'm looking forward, as you said, Mike, I may or may not be on the board, but I look forward to cutting that ribbon too. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mahoney?
No, this is a red letter day. We had the Wells Fargo announcement earlier today, and I think the, as Mr. Peters referred to it, Wells Fargo came about through a variety of initiatives. One of those were, was, one of those initiatives was the improvements to Plantation Road, long-range planning. This is part of long-range planning. And working with the school board over the years, and the Citizens Committee, we found a site, and it looks like a good site. And I'm excited that we are now able to kick off this initiative so that we will have a future for our children, our grandchildren. And again, this is part of our long-range plan, and this is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, and Ken, I'm excited for the school system, because, you know, you're going to get a, a great-looking facility. I'm, I'm excited about the site too. It, it fits well with, with the overall plan, and I, I am glad, Mike, we got a stoplight. Thank you for making sure that happened, because my, I want to help see my accountant.
And the student.
I have to fight with the Bojangles' traffic and the, and the school and all that, so that was very good. Anyway, looking forward to the day we are, are going to cut the ribbon. You know, I think it's exciting for our community. And you're right, Paul, it's a red letter day, and it's just great news all around with, with everything today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. North?
Madam Chair, I want to just add to some comments that were mentioned about economic impact. At the bare minimum, the economic impact is 210 million. And we know today that that number is even higher, probably more than double. And that is huge for the county and for the region. And yes, this is the only B in the Hollands District. And yes, there is a study going on along Peters Creek Road by the VDOT folks to study that corridor for improvements. And I do know that we have, over the years, meticulously and methodically had projects for sidewalks along that corridor. That takes time, because you have to file for, you've got to file through the smart-scale program with the Commonwealth of Virginia to get funding. of Virginia to get funding, which is only every two years. If they change a SmartScale scoring system, that is going to make these kind of projects even more difficult. And that's being discussed at this time. So I would say to anyone who has an opinion about sidewalks, they need to take this conversation to the next level with members of the House of Delegates, and specifically refer to the SmartScale Funding Program, which encompasses trails, sidewalks, roads, and corridors for improvement. We're meeting on that Thursday, Supervisor Radford and I, at the Transportation Planning Organization to adopt a position. The county also has in discussion about adopting a position. And the Commonwealth Transportation Board Representative, Dr. Smoot, who lives down in the Christiansburg area, will be contacted with our opinions. The point I'm getting at is this. Yes, safety is utmost among my mind, but also among VDOTs as well. So specifically, where do these sidewalks, that they don't exist, need to exist? We need some more input on that, Valerie, and you and I can talk about it later. In fact, I would go ahead and ask Doug and to talk to Megan about, and I sent you all the comments that Valerie spoke to us tonight about, for some thought. Yeah, we have some projects, but what do we have on Peters Creek Road? Because that's going to be a busy corridor as well. In fact, there's even efforts to prioritize that. So we have many, many needs and many, many priorities, but it just takes time to chip away and get the job done. Will we need sidewalks there around the CTE? Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. Most people are probably going to be driving in and out of there. But I do know that up on Plantation Road, the infrastructure improvements over the last 10 years are mounting to $14 million, of which $12 million was federal and state funding, and the rest was county money, have proved to not only increase the safety, but it also provided for the attractiveness of businesses like Wells Fargo and Elbitz that's there and Double Envelope. And those folks appreciate those improvements. And it also attracted the expansion we heard about today from Wells Fargo. So lots of good things going on, but there's always room for improvement. And sidewalks certainly are one of those items. With that said, having there been no other comments, I would like to make a move to, for the motion before us.
So are you going to read some of your motion sheet?
I'm going to read the motion.
Okay, do it.
Okay, Madam Chair. Okay, the petition of Roanoke County Public Schools to rezonate approximately 12 acres from R3 medium-density multifamily residential district to C1 low-intensity commercial district, and to remove the proffered condition on approximately 5.0 acres of land sown C1C low-intensity commercial district with conditions located at the end of Burlington Drive, 6305 Peters Creek Road, and 1120 East Drive Hollins Magisterial District. I find that the proposed rezoning request is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's adopted comprehensive plan. Two is good zoning practice, and three will not result in substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve the rezoning request, and as it has been requested, and remove the one proffered condition from the property located at Zero Burlington Drive, Roanoke County Tax Map Number 027 dot 13 dash 05 dash 05 dot 00 dash four zeros, applied to the property by Ordinance 082796 dash 10, dated August 27, 1996.
I'll make a second, and will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Radford?
A big yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. It's a good day. Item P is citizen comments and communications. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
And so reports and inquiries of board members. Number one, Mr. North.
Here we go again. Thank you, Madam Chair. Some other items going on around the area. Attended the Vistar Eye Centers Airport Road Open House and Dedication on September the 14th. What a great facility, 26,000 square foot facility, which provides dedicated eye care in the Hollins community to serve all of the region around us as well. They're a valued member of the business community, and we appreciate their commitment to growth and vitality in the Hollins area. It's top-notch facility, is all I got to say after taking a tour of it. And on September 19th, we attended the Greater Williamson Road Business Association, where Megan Baker and Megan Cronice and Roanoke County presented on economic development and transportation projects in the Hollins area. Also, on September 19th, I attended a VDOT public meeting to gather input on the Third Lane widening seven miles in each direction, a total of 14 miles between both Exits 143 and 150 on I-81. The total cost is $479 million, or put another way, $34 million a mile. The purpose is to add capacity and to improve safety. Targeted construction begins in the fall of '25 and completed sometime in the summer of 2031. Let me also say this, that in the recent budget negotiations, we, Southwest Virginia, was not awarded $150 million. After it was approved by the House and the Senate in budget negotiations, it was removed. Getting transportation funds is darn hard, and we're going to work tirelessly on our part to try to improve that. But I will tell you this, we'll learn more about I-81 on Monday, when I attend the annual meeting of the I-81 Commission, and participate in the vibrant discussion up and down the corridor of I-81. And of course, today was a great day, a red-letter date for economic development in Roanoke County. I want to thank our team and staff again for the Wells Fargo announcement for the Plantation Road facility, $87 million investment, one of the largest investment, I'm told, in the history of Roanoke County by any business. 1,100 new jobs, $57 million alone per year in wage, new wages to our region, and a total all-encompassing $322 million in regional impact. This is absolutely huge, and it's going to increase school enrollment, I bet, at some of our schools in the area, which is a great thing, which means that the state of Virginia will have to give us some more money. So with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Well, I have two items, Madam Chair. I want to commend the Roanoke County Schools, and specifically Mr. Spangler and Mr. Ray, not so much for what we just voted on tonight, but something almost as critically important, which was back on Friday, September 22nd, we had the Cave Spring High School Homecoming Parade. The leader of that parade was Rondi Barber. And Mr. Spangler and Mr. Ray did a great job. Mr. Spangler got a beautiful plaque that's going to be erected at Vogel Field. And Mr. Ray had a wonderful resolution from the school board, recognizing Rondi and his family. And they were there. And for those who don't remember or weren't around, oh my gosh, back how many years ago? Early 90s?
92 era.
Rondi and Tiki Barber were stars at Cave Spring High School. They both went on to have fantastic careers in the National Football League. Rondi was recently voted into the NFL Hall of Fame. He had his gold jacket. He played his entire career with the Tampa Bay Bucks, and they won a Super Bowl. But also, he led the homecoming parade, which was, which was great. It was a lot of fun. And I think Cave Spring won the football game that night. So it was a great night all around. So with that, I want to thank the school board and commend Steve Spangler and Mike Ray for, for all the things that they did to make, to make Friday night a great success. Secondly, I want to give a thank you to our county staff, Megan Cronice, and also Brian Blevins. They were able to resolve a citizen complaint that came to me last week, and they got right on it. And I just want to publicly say thank you, both to Megan and to Brian Blevins at VDOT, for getting right on it and addressing, addressing that citizen's concern. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just another word of thanks to the announcement earlier today about Wells Fargo. It seems like Mr. North has hit a home run here with, with a new CTE in his area, and now this, the largest employer. That's fantastic news. And you just, it's, it's hard to top that. One other comment I want to make, I'll be attending the Vaco Annual Meeting coming up in November, but I have joined their Committee of Energy, Environment, and Land Use. So I hope I can use my expertise and help, help on a state level with that. So I'm looking, looking forward to that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Well, same thing's been said. Today's just been a great day to add the, to add new jobs to Roanoke County, which will, will help everybody to keep an employer here in town. You know, this could have went another, another way. I mean, they, they were obviously looking to make an expansion. That could have been somewhere else. So they chose to stay here, and that's, that's a wonderful thing. Fall Festival in Benton is coming up on October the 7th, if my memory serves me correct. Hope anybody who wants to come out and just have a good time, come on down and see us. I know I'll be there. And I think that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Great. I have just a couple of things I wanted to say, like everyone else who has commented on what a great day it is for CTE in Roanoke County and the, in the broader area. We are truly excited to be partnering with our schools and are just so pleased that this day has finally come. So thank you for all your good work and look forward to continuing that partnership. The Wells Fargo expansion, it was just such a great day on so many levels, but I just want to again brag on our staff and all the good work that they did in preparing to give a successful proposal. Thank you to Wells Fargo for choosing to stay. And I, I look for many years of, of mutual benefit from this. Had an opportunity last week to hike McAfee's Knob, and hadn't done it in several years. And it was just, it was incredibly refreshing on how beautiful it was, and just a reminder, and this isn't even peak leaf season, but just a reminder of the beauty of this valley. And we, we truly do have a lot to be thankful for.
Did you take the shuttle?
I did not. We went very early. We went very early in the morning. That's, that's what we do. And, and so, but it was, it was a great day. I had a family from out of town, and it was a great experience. So encourage you guys to be doing that soon. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And is there a second? And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, we are adjourned.
Who wants to manage and steward, steward of the land we're talking about. So we spoke with someone who's doing just that.
I'm Angela Mooney DRC. I'm Ahashamum. Our ancestral territories are on the coast-